Penny.
She's getting the last copy of this. I suspected that somebody in this room probably asked for a copy of it, so.
You're not talking about me, are you?
I should put her on the TV if she won't sign it. Hello.
You can help.
I know, I had to move the table. Let me get this ready and then.
Now it's just the, it's very long paper that.
Whenever you're ready.
Yes, it is. Yeah, it's quiet. Oh, wow, that's so much better.
All right, we're good, you guys. We're good.
Good evening, we'll call this meeting of the Buckfield Select Board to order for August seventh, twenty twenty-three at six thirty-two P M. And we do have a corner. Old business cemetery committee updates. You guys did a lot of work. It's fantastic.
Updates, uh, I think you received the email with the updates that correlated to the sections. That were prioritized. So I did meet with the budget committee. Well, I went to the budget committee meeting. And that was their first meeting and they discussed a lot about. Uh, investments and stuff, but they weren't ready. Uh, to make decisions until, um, Peter were with met with Kim and I think that's on your agenda tonight, but. I said that if possible, I would follow up. Um, and I just saw that there the budget meeting is like, I think Thursday night and I won't, I won't be able to do that, so. Um, Peter asked if we would make the. Try to the in- inventory checklist and that's done.
Have you seen that?
I did.
Do you want? I've got, I've only got four copies.
Is that the same thing you guys? Nope, haven't seen that, never mind.
So on the cemetery's ground, it'll say cemetery grounds and maintenance.
Thank you.
And what we did, we divvied up. In close to twenty try to sure, maybe even twenty-one. That have that the four of us have gone to. And filled out. And we have the originals. Uh, because Lillian was trying to get ahold of you, uh, Bob, and figure out how best to make that happen. I don't understand that technical side of whatever. I don't understand what the issue is, but. How something's too big or.
Yeah, the images were too big to say, but I did get images in the end and it included the checklist, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
There is some work at every cemetery, um. I've done four. And East Buckfield one, the. Fence has been broken down for a couple of years. And husband and I went out the other day, tried to put it back up. But it's moved over the years, so we got it tacked up and you can't tell from the road. That it's not right, but that's one thing that has to be fixed. Quite a few stones need to be straightened and all of them to coster needs that worth of. Looking at them as a whole, they're pretty good.
Yeah.
I made a new sign for Drew.
And there.
And they are the Thea Monument, I made a sign and we hung it on Saturday, so. So I think that's what we stand.
Yeah, and there's only one more what I did Vogel or Vogel sang.
Will and I found out on Saturday and. That we're gonna have to go over the chainsaw and clean that up.
I really appreciate the work you guys doing out there with that stuff, because.
My goal is to get the cemeteries as good as we can and then we hand it over if they go down.
I too that is in really bad condition was the Prince Cemetery. And. There's numerous stones broken. They've been fed, uh, stones up against the stone wall, but then small. Bushes and grasses grown up, so you really can't see them. And one corner of it. Washed out years ago, cottons a little. And but that was the worst one. The other two that I went to. In pretty good condition.
And so one of the things we did a jump start and then you'll just, uh, you guys like figure out. Is the, uh, I think it's the document in your package that says. Cemetery tax map and lot numbers. So we we got, we had the tax map upstairs, we were we taught ourselves. Uh, read it and find everything. So we by, we think again, you know, we're not perfect. Identified lot numbers if they were on the map, but there's tons of lot numbers that weren't on that. In an attempt to identify the surrounding a budding. Property owners so that they could be notified like the Vogel one where you have to walk through their property to get to it. So we could, somebody could call from the town and say, hey, we're gonna send up some people and they're gonna be working, so. That was on the prioritize.
Yeah.
Well, what else? We'd like to get G P S numbers. G P S number for cemetery and.
I saw that, that was interesting. I didn't know that was a. An available thing.
If you go to find a grave.
Yeah.
You can stand right by a grave and it'll.
And the town manager found one of the cemetery maps this morning, right?
Yeah, that was in the report too. Linda had gotten a deed and made copies of the Damon Cemetery from Damon's and.
Well, it went first to, uh, Buckfield.
Associate.
Associate Cemetery Association. I never did find when they actually turned it over strictly to the town.
Correct.
Yes.
So if there is someone out there who has some time, who is handy, who. Good at gardening or chainsaw, um, who should they contact if they. Are feeling like, hey, I have a free afternoon, I'd like to help out.
That's up to you guys.
I'm sure you'd like to help, right? If we can get some folks out there, yeah. So what would be the best way for them to get in touch?
Who should they call? You?
A lot of people just go and do it. And it's not just the people mowing their own lots. I mean, they go, I I see people doing work out there. I. They can contact me, all I'm gonna do is give them Walden's phone number because. Yeah, I mean. I'm not up at the cemetery. Yeah, I did go through Dean Cemetery the other day and. To their point of broken stones and stuff, the amount of stones, you know, older stones that are broken. I I can't even imagine how much it would cost to reset all of them. And I think that for me to figure out a plan. I think the priority should be those that paid for medical care. Um, but there are definitely a lot of stones out there that are. In need of repair. And I just went through one small section. I went down like probably a hundred and fifty yards and two of the center. Center sections.
I think so. On the Sodom Road, there was still some cemeteries we've not found.
Did you, did you guys find the one on Hammond? Hammond, did you go for the one on Hammond Hill?
No.
I know where.
That was one of the ones that we had. But we did find.
Yes.
So, right, but there's one pass there, I think, correct, that I haven't found in Lilden.
Right.
I'll, I'll take a run up and take some pictures and get G P S for you.
Fill out a chocolates, I'm gonna say.
Yeah.
The work you have done is phenomenal and means a great deal. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
I don't think so. Do you need any more help from us at the moment, though? I want to make sure you have the resources you need to continue and.
I would just strongly encourage. To find or for you all to find a way to just keep plugging away at it. Uh, in terms like the tax map lot numbers. And making sure that there's a tax map. Lot number for every single cemetery. And that is correct. Um. And then the budding owners. And that piece that that document that you got in your package is a huge jumpstart. Like it might say. Andrews Coggin Land Trust might surround one, but we literally found. Descriptions of where it was, but it wasn't on the map. And I don't know when in town it does redo the tax connection. We were looking at twenty twenty ones, but I don't know how frequently that happens or whatever. I would definitely. And then the data will come. Uh, there was, if if someone sees that there's not a flag. Like F F Turner, which is the post of one to me. There wasn't, uh, one of the older markers, but it didn't have a flag. I think it just got missed when the flag for. It wasn't on the ground. It it wouldn't have gone out of the cemetery. There it would be impossible. So I think it just got missed. If someone sees one, do they just come to the town office and ask for a flag or who would they report that? It just.
I have flags so people see it and they're willing to put it there. They can come pick one up or let me know. I'll try to get out there. Or have somebody get out there.
Yeah, okay. Do you need to?
Yeah.
Didn't that say they're all winter?
No. They get picked up in the fall.
Fall, yeah.
And then returns here.
If it's possible to keep them later, remember they would be taken up too soon.
So it doesn't have to be a conversation to be had with, with, I think Gretchen or the school, because they're the ones that typically pick them up. The other alternative is I'm gonna have to have my guys go out and do it and. It's a lot easier to do it with, you know, four kids than it is with four guys.
And that came up, what? That came up because the flags go up Memorial and then other towns leave them off until after Veterans Day. Whereas we're picking them up before Veterans Day, right? That that was one of the. Um, now was that one other thing that I thought of on your. Oh, the data list, the date, Will's data list, um.
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, it's okay. Camera, would it be helpful if I reached out to Gretchen and. See if there's a specific reason that we use the date that they do and just have that conversation with her without.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Okay.
I would, because I heard she retired this year.
She might know the right person to talk to, uh, the the.
It's the day of caring or whatever they, it's a day of volunteer for the students, so. Okay, I'll reach out to the school and see what I can find. Can we do that at a different time or? Maybe it's something that. Scout troop could do some of it or.
But I think Cameron's right, though. I think you guys have to decide when those flags come down. So if you think it's kind of a good idea to leave the flag up until after. Veterans Day, then I think you have to decide that before you talk to that person. I don't.
I think we should talk to the volunteers first, because they are volunteers. Yeah, and it's November eleventh. I saw you just looked up. Yeah, I couldn't remember what day it was, so, yeah, we're. Well, I need time after. September thirtieth, you could snow, right?
And and we closed, then we, and the, the cemeteries are closing November first, so. Wow, it's a foot traffic only. Because that's has happened. We do get snow in November. You know, things get muddy.
Yep. Thank you all very much.
You.
That's all right. New business, the consent agenda.
So I apologize, I didn't have a town manager's report. I wasn't pretty occupied today. I'll get you on the next meeting.
You've been busy.
And I left these off, but Peter reminded me today in my five minutes, so I'll give each one of you a copy of what I'm gonna provide him tomorrow. But this is. The town's first attempt at a quarter, well, I guess it would be a end of year financial report for last year.
Wow, it's very exciting.
The only thing that this wouldn't have for last fiscal year, uh, is the, um, any bills that have been. In twenty-four or twenty-three, twenty-four that were from last year. And when you look at the expense detail report, you notice the. Emergency contingency was never put in there, um, and neither were any of the budgets for the revenues. So I do have that information in the office, um, but. It's a lot more. Well, it's something, but it's a lot more than what we've been provided in the last, you know, three years, so.
Yeah.
Now, if you have any questions, when you review them, you can reach out to me and I'll try to answer them as best I can. I did put a note sheet in there. Um, before the expense detail, talk about like warrant articles that passed for. Money from undesignated funds that went to specific departments, because obviously that's not in the overall budget that you see there. So you're gonna want to take that number and add it to the other number to determine what the actual fund it was, that way you know that. We didn't go over, um, the only department. Through today, which I'm pretty sure I've covered all the invoices now for the last fiscal year. The only department that went over the solid waste, but. That that overdue is gonna come out of the solid waste checking account. Um, and that's primarily because of the fuel surcharges and increases in. This Vogel cost.
Yeah.
So. And solid waste is off by. Just under four thousand dollars, because we had that check that was, uh, cashed by somebody other than who was supposed to cash it.
Yeah.
Um, I've been talking to Northeast Bank and that money should be in our account. It may already be there or will be shortly. They went and got a notarized statement from. The vendor to say that they didn't get the check. So we finally got that money back, but before I close up the year, I hadn't backed it out yet, so. That'll, that'll come out when we do the audit. It'll be backed off a bit, so all in all, we stayed within budget. We are actually under budget quite a bit. Uh, so there's gonna be. Significant amount of the leftover budget is gonna cost us fund balance.
Yeah.
So I'd rather be under than over, but I'd rather be on than.
Right.
Under, so obviously I was working through more of his numbers and we did the best we could to keep expenses down to. You know, what we could.
Yeah. And there's some certainty.
Yeah, a lot more certainty.
Just fantastic, yeah. Thank you. Yes, man.
How how could I be called in there?
I knew you were gonna ask it.
And I have, Peter, I do have yours in my office.
My other question is.
Oh, you know what? Let me see that copy.
Do you need my copy?
And you said, no, you guys are fine. No, I blocked them out. You're good.
So the revenues aren't in here in the.
The revenue budget isn't in there, but the actual revenues that came in are. So you can see what we brought in, but you just, it doesn't show you what was budgeted.
General ledger?
Yeah, that's still, the the general ledger is a mess. When when it gets set up and true, well, no, it's not that it's a mess. It's, it was set up. Incorrectly, so, um, the general ledger, I'm gonna have to completely do via, um. Excel until I can get with the auditor to fix the way it was set up. Their accounts shouldn't, like, it's just, it's a mess. But if you ever want to come and sit down with me, I'll show you what's there.
To to clarify. Financially, it's not a mess. It's clerically.
Right, if I, if I showed it to you, you'd have a million questions and it would just be. Garbage in, garbage out. I'd be providing you something that means nothing to you. So unless I put the correct information into an Excel spreadsheet and have it all where it should be, it's. You know, like when we, we, I'll give you an example, when we initially set up. Um, the trust fund accounts in the general ledger, so for like the interest and stuff, or there's actually like four tiers. There's four general ledgers in Trio. There's one, two, three, and four. And we tried to set up the trust funds in general ledger three. And they never loaded the balances. So when I tried to put the balances in, it made everything out of balance, so I backed it every, I backed everything out, back to zero. And it's, so you see debits and credits that aren't really there. It was me trying to fix what was never set up right. So it's just, it's, it's a waste to look at.
But you're working.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
He's great.
No worries. And like you said, if you have any questions, I know I just kind of dropped it on you, but. Next meeting, whenever. In the meantime, shoot me an email, whatever.
I can't wait to go through it. Right.
So if somebody wants to see this, they are welcome to come down to the town office and.
Yep.
Look through it.
Or submit your questions in writing.
Certainly. This is available to anybody who would like to look at it.
One question per question.
The budget committee is going to review this with this camera. For as long as it takes to get through it. On Thursday, five thirty.
Thursday at five thirty.
And we, uh. I'm not sure we'll have a report out of that for the select order, but actually our bylaws says we should review them four times. Inserted.
It's gotten you here all strong. Fantastic. All right. Hey, so, uh, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's the amount of two hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and ninety-one cents.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, Bob, I.
Azalea, I.
Heather, I.
Sandra, I.
Thank you. Uh, approval of the minutes from July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, select board meeting.
I reviewed them and found no errors, so I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three select board meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, Bob, I.
Zelia, I.
Heather, I. Sandra, I.
Thanks. And now we're on to some sad business. Uh. Mike Iverson has, uh, decided to resign from the board. Um, for personal reasons and time commitments, you know. Obviously, uh, he and Janet put a lot into the town and, uh. We really appreciated. Both of their input and they're going to be missed for sure. Um. So if I, I believe we have to take a vote to accept his resignation on this. Yes, the trivia, okay. Um. Anybody like to make that motion?
So with regret. Um, I like to make the motion that we accept. Um. Like absence resignation.
I will regretfully second that motion.
Any further discussion?
I appreciate what you've said and I think I. I agree with that and I think I speak for everyone. How much we appreciate all that he did. I know how much I learned. From him and, um.
Certainly, he stepped up, uh, during a very difficult period here and. I learned a lot from him as well, Janet too. Great folks. All right, all in favor, Bob, I.
Zelia, I.
Heather, I. Sandra, I.
Thank you. And the animal control officer resignation. Robert Larvee. Um, yeah, he's, he just doesn't have the time. And he's given us some recommendations to talk to some other folks to help us out. Because he's covered, well, he covers three or four towns already, I think.
Yeah, names on the Oxford, I think Oxford Fire Department. It's been really busy for him, so. He gave me a recommendation. I'm gonna make a phone call and see if they're interested. If not, I'll post, I'll post the job, um. It's the the recommendation he made to somebody that does animal control for neighboring towns, so. It it may be a simple transition, but I need to have a conversation first. I don't want to speak for anybody before they've said, yeah, I know what to do there.
Okay, yes, I.
Do you know, um, what we offer? For compensation is that?
Minimum wage.
Is that what most towns pay?
Some towns, I have to look around, but I mean, most.
Like neighboring towns.
I don't think it's right. Uh, our budget's relatively limited. I mean, it's not a high. What's the word used with the medical director? A high. Demand, like, I mean, there are instances, you know, there are. We do have cases, but it's not something that where they're gonna be here every week. They're gonna be here every day, you know, it's.
Low impact.
Low impact, that was. Um, you know, there could be nothing for a month and then they could get. Bombarded by calls from the same people over and over again for three weeks straight. It it's. It's one of those things that's kind of hard to budget for too. You know, like half of our animal welfare budget goes towards, um, shelter fees. Not half, but a good majority of it, probably third, so.
I'm just thinking, if we're looking for someone who works for neighboring towns to pick up work in our town. If our. Pay range is significantly lower than our neighboring towns, what motivation is there for somebody to say, sure, I'll. Take on Buckfield as well, so that's.
Animal control is a lot similar to code enforcement too. Uh, you could hire someone that doesn't have, isn't certified, but they have to be certified within six months. So, but. I could probably reach out to some of the neighboring towns and poke around and. Find out. I mean, I have a decent enough relationship where I figure I could probably ask and then tell me. It's public information anyways. But. I just haven't acted on it because I wanted you all to know about it first and then. Accept Robert's resignation first before I move forward.
So we're gonna, you're gonna look into that just to.
Yeah.
Get an idea and let us know. All right. So I'll make a motion to accept, uh. Robert Larvee's resignation as animal control officer.
Second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Robert, for your time and your post. And we appreciate you taking the time to make recommendations for us as well. With your departure.
Any other question? Um, I need to have a brain. Cameron, do we take mileage to then?
All in favor, Bob, I.
Azalea, I.
Heather, I. Sandra, I.
Right. And some more upbeat news, the rescue chief appointment for Stacy Black here. Uh, so, uh, did you want to?
Well, I have all of you had a chance to read the letter that I wrote. About Stacy, but letting you know what her choice was. Uh, Stacy's been with us since we lost. The number of employees that we lost. Um, she's been, she was serving as the interim deputy, um, with Cassie over the last few months. Um, I've learned a lot about her and I I definitely feel that she is the right candidate for the job. I also believe that. We're lucky to have her with us, um. Her. Operational skills, her, well, her background in EMS and fire, um, as well as. The way she conducts herself, the way she interacts with employees. Uh, I definitely think that. This is a step in the right direction, um, and. I haven't heard one bad thing from any employee above. I haven't heard one bad thing from any employee about her, so I mean, that should say a lot as well. So, that's, I'm just looking for a. Confirmation of my appointment from the boards, because that's what the personnel policy handbook says. She's already acting chief and. Yeah. She's on to, if anybody has any questions, no pressure.
No pressure, Stacy. See if she hops on. I know she's working. So.
No, I'm here.
Yeah, there we go. Any questions for Stacy? Now I can vouch for Stacy, she's wonderful, she's. Been in the MS for what? How long Stacy, fourteen years?
Yeah, going on fourteen years, yep.
Yeah. Fire service, you work dispatch, both. Your state police and the county. And you're firefighter in.
Uh, firefighter in the town of Paris, the town of Oxford, the town of Casco. And I think that's it, yep.
So, yeah, typically EMS worker.
Yes.
Fantastic, so. Looking for a motion to appoint Stacy Rescue Chief?
I'll make a motion that we approve Cam's appointment for Stacy to fire chief. Rescue chief.
Thank you. I'll second that. Any further discussion? Yes, Viv?
Do you foresee, I mean, does the board foresee? New rescue chief precipitating in item number four, which is fire rescue department integration, when it. When it happens, I mean, is that what Cameron meant when he said we're getting there, kind of closer to integrating or?
I'm sure Stacy will be involved and I mean, it's, it's gonna take a little time, but. And it won't just be Stacy, we want, you know, a lot of input from. The fire rescue folks, everybody. Folks in the town. As we look toward. Some sort of integration.
Yeah.
You bet. All right, all in favor, Bob, I.
Azalea, I.
Heather, I.
Sandra, I.
Here we go. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Bank signatory update.
Yeah, so we didn't do this in July. When we re, or whenever we re-elected officers, so. What we've typically done, the board can do whatever they want, but I, I believe when you and I were on the board together. We added the chair and the vice chairs and two other signatories on the bank account. It's a. It's two for, it's one, if I get hit by a bus, somebody can still sign checks.
Yeah.
But it's also protection for the town too, because they can't open enclosed bank accounts without the other two signatures. So makes me feel good, makes town feel good, it's the right thing to do.
So, e- easy sell.
So I'm, I'm just looking for a, a motion for you to. Name your two other signatories and then I'll get it started with the bank. You wind up getting cocky signing.
Okay.
Documents that you want to fill out.
Gotcha. And it's usually the chairman and vice chair.
That's what we did in the past. I mean, the board can do whatever the board thinks is best, so. But it just makes sense.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Bob Hand and Sandra Fickett as our bank signatory council.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thanks. Any further discussion? All in favor, Bob, I.
Zelia, I.
Heather, I.
Sandra, I.
Uh, rec committee bylaws.
I guess I can speak to this one. So the direct committee had a meeting. Um, and. As in the bylaws, they're supposed to review their bylaws annually. Hasn't happened for a couple of years through the whole COVID ordeal. We typically sit around, you know, between four and six members. At one point, they increased it to eleven. I, I don't think it, the board, sorry. The committee didn't think it was necessary to have the number be that high. So the only real changes in this, as you can see, is changing from eleven to seven. On page two. Under members attendance. He struck. The second half of that paragraph. Cause it basically like uniformly said, if, if somebody missed those meetings, then the board was to at their next scheduled meeting. So, so basically, if later on you'll see, if, if a member misses three consecutive meetings. The chair will notify the board. The committee has the right to hold a vote to decide whether or not they're gonna, they want to remove that person. And then they will forward that information off to the select board to act on. The select board obviously can remove anybody for cause, for whatever reason. The. Emergency meetings thing. If there's ever an emergency meeting and then my office is notified of it, or they need to schedule an emergency meeting. I would post it on the calendar, post it on Facebook. I have sent those notices off to the newspapers before. It's kind of hard. Usually they don't get posted relatively fast. I think Facebook, the website, a notice at Hilton's. Is sufficient. To let people know where the sign out from shuts up to you. Um, and then. Section, yeah. Which part?
Section five A.
Section five A. Oh, I missed that. Yes, uh, so the bylaws said that we would meet, or the rec committee would meet the third Sunday of, of every month. Oops, yeah, every month. Realistically, the rec committee only needs to meet every other month, you know, with basketball, soccer and baseball. A lot of times it's hard for us to have these meetings, but we. We're running in different directions and a lot of the committee members are also coaches, so we thought every two months would be sufficient. So if you think about, you know, removal of a member, they would have to miss six months worth of meetings before they would be removed anyway, so I mean, they have enough to, I believe, all. Removal of an officer member is kind of a spinoff of the other one. We struck most of it. It says, if an officer member of the committee misses three consecutive meetings, they may be recommended for removal fr- from the committee by a majority vote of the appointed committee members. And I say, we said recommended because we'd have to make that recommendation to the board and then the board would have to approve it. Uh, but we did leave in the section. The select board reserves the right to remove any member of the committee for cause. Uh, left the subcommittees alone. Um, did change under operating budget. It did say during the month of February. You all follow the budget process this year. I want to work on budgets in December, you know, the, the prep work of it anyways. Um, so we changed February to December, because usually by February, that's what presenting to the budget committee, or if I stick with the same plan, it worked this year, so. And then obviously I changed everybody's name at the bottom and scratched out twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-three.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve these changes to the recreation committee bylaws. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Uh, all in favor, Bob, I.
Azalea, I.
Heather, I.
Sandra, I.
Many appointments.
Wait.
No, don't skip over.
Oh, I'm sorry, I better check when I should though.
So the community events committee worked on new bylaws. It's a totally fresh committee, coming back after COVID, nobody on the committee is the same. So we figured. Do new bylaws. Um, so we changed it from. The community day committee to a community events committee. And then we just changed it to community day festival and. Labor Day, on Labor Day, and kind of got rid of all the. Extra words, it seemed like. Um, and then we changed it to, from three people to five people for the minimum and nine for the max, because we had a bunch of people. Join, which is really exciting. Uh, members can be from any state, however, in no event shall the majority. Of Buckfield residents serving on the committee constitute less than majority at any time. Uh, what else do we change? Annually electing a chairman, I said in the month of October, we were not sure why, so we got rid of the October thing. Um, and then the secretary. Comparing minutes and submitting them to the town office. We got rid of the deadline of seven dates, seven days. Cause we thought that might not be the time for our secretary to. Submit notes, um. Okay, and then that was just, um. Andy, that's just us saying that we're gonna send them to the town to be kept here.
This isn't a lot of the bylaws. Executive session with a member from the committee.
Is it, is Robert's rule of order supposed to have an apostrophe in it or not? Does anybody know?
Not, we're not looking online, yeah.
Cause we didn't, we thought it needed, and then now I see in another set of bylaws in this packet that it didn't.
Doesn't mean it's not wrong.
I know, I didn't know if that one needs. It does.
There we go.
I'll have to try to remember which one it was I saw then. Um, there is something else. Copy the bylaws too, that needs to be changed. It says page four to five on the last page.
I think that's because of the way she did the, when she gave me this copy, she did it with the tracking all in there and sometimes what's being removed. Makes it look like it's out of the lineup, but once you take all that out, it actually is, so, because the rec one did the same thing.
We also took out the newspaper thing for the emergency meeting. And just said we were gonna notify the town office as well, and put it on the town calendars. We struck all the stuff about subcommittees and just growth that we're gonna like make subcommittees as we need them. And that. Somebody from the committee needs to be the chairman for each subcommittee. Right, then we got updated to. The dates.
These are really hard to read when they have the cross.
Especially if they're not in color. Yes, honor.
So, we may be doing this process out of order. We should have made a motion and then discussed this. I just.
Yeah.
Technicality, but.
I messed it up, because I.
It's the way we did the last one.
Yeah.
So.
That's my bad.
But the. The piece for me is on members attendance. This is requiring the select board to. Conduct an executive session with the member. Who missed the meetings and I'm not sure. I mean, it's something that we could do, but if. If we accept these bylaws, then if somebody misses three meetings, we are required to have an, and. That may not be necessary.
Yeah, I agree. Um, I'd like to give the opportunity to anyone who would want to take it up, say they missed three meetings and they want to have that private conversation with us.
Certainly.
But yeah, requiring that's after three, that's what I'm thinking is.
The rec committee struck that one out of theirs.
Yeah, could we make that change to just match the rec committee, do you think?
Yeah.
Like you said, on, on the record, they left the select board reserves the right to remove any member of the committee.
Yeah, I think that's perfect.
And certainly. Anyone can. What, um.
We have the recommendation from the, um, budget committee. Just before we choose to change things, let's look and see what that says, so perhaps we could have consistency.
Yeah, there's, there's very, it's just, you missed three today.
Uh, provides for the, uh. Chair of the committee, i- i- if it's just, it's not totally automatic. They can say you have good cause, you know, you're low, whatever. So give a. Outlet that. Probably we should normalize all these.
Right.
Maybe next year.
Yeah.
So we can keep moving now.
So what is past procedure or protocol for making changes to a committee's?
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
Bylaws.
Not sure.
Because, I'm.
You can do whatever you want.
I, but just because we can, right. Um, I suppose if we make that change, the next time the committee meets, if they want to do something different, then they could.
Come back.
Come back again, so if we make changes. He just, the committee should know that.
Bylaws, their very first rule.
Okay.
So will you reme- the. Was the board recommending? Under the motion and then.
Yeah. You want to do the motion with the amendments or you?
You need a motion in a second, so I can rescind it all after, but you need to.
So I'll make a motion to accept. The. Recommended changes to the bylaws of the. Community. Events committee.
Okay. Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so now we'll discuss.
Discussion.
So were you talking about striking?
Yeah, making the members attendance match the recreation committees pretty much.
So basically drop that second half of the paragraph and then add it, they can be removed.
Exactly, yeah.
Can I vote on yours?
As long as there's no money.
Yeah, true, that's right. I almost forgot that. Do we want to just adopt the language? Straight from the recreation committee or modify this slightly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
And since they don't have a section for the removal of an officer slash member in the, uh, community events committee, does that just go right under member attendance?
Yeah.
Cause in the rec committee, they have the whole section six, which is where we say the select board deserves the right to remove any member of the committee. Cause, but since they don't have that section in the community events committee, will we just be placing that underneath the members attendance?
That's how I was into, understanding.
Yeah.
So perhaps next year.
Right.
Before. Committees meet for their initial meeting. The.
Select board could. Make some suggestions.
Yep.
On how to. Or consistency, universal language for consistency. That would be great.
Well, when committee would welcome some standard language. We will go along.
All right.
Said that's your.
Okay, we can do it tonight.
Back and redo the work that they've all done.
Yeah.
Cause this is great work, but.
Yep. Yeah, there's just. U- universal language that would. Clarify things, yeah. So do we have to resend our motion at that point and say? We're gonna make a motion to approve with amendments.
Or I think I can amend my motion.
You'd have to rescind.
Rescind first.
Yeah, we send you second.
I'll rescind my second.
Okay, so. So I. Like to amend my motion that we accept the. Recreation Committee bylaws. The changes to the recreation committee bylaws, um, as recommended by the committee with. The. Changes to. It's like community. Sorry, community. The community.
We know what you meant. With the discussed.
With the discussed amendments to member attendance.
And I'll second that.
And removal. A member, but it's sort of. Two for.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
You got it.
Any further discussion on that? All right, we're trying to do it with. All in favor, Bob, I.
Zelia, I, Heather, I, Sandra, I.
Thank you. There now.
Any more motions to?
I was so excited to see all these committee appointments, I jumped ahead. Well, now there's room, right? Yes, Benny?
Yes, the, um, community day posted that. And that there would be no event this year.
Yeah.
Say why, could you give more detail of?
Because.
Nothing, no picnic, anything?
Um, we all kind of decided that with five weeks left, we didn't wanna do something small enough, people be disappointed. That it's not the community day that they're used to. And just decided to start working on next year, so that it's the big thing that everybody's used to. We were gonna disappoint people either way. So.
Yeah, and you didn't have much time to work with there, five, five weeks.
Either be disappointed that there's nothing or disappointed that there's something small, either way, people were gonna be. Disappointed.
Harvest Festival.
We have been talking a lot about other events, especially fall stuff, so. Then we offered to take over trunk or treat, which Cameron's very happy about, I'm sure, one less thing to have to do. So. So we got a fun group. Shit's gonna be a nice week.
Possibly involved, I just don't like it. Organizing yet.
Yeah.
It's a lot. Plus last year, I think I threw it together really quick and it actually turned out really well, it just was.
Always nice, it's always fun.
Kids have fun. Okay, so a lot of candy. A lot of candy.
I go through three hundred bags on the water street.
I live up on the mountain, I'm not used to.
I get three. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, committee appointments. You got one, two, three, six, seven of them.
I'll make a motion to appoint Richard Irons to the old church on the hill committees.
I will.
For two years.
I will second that motion.
Any discussions? All those in favor, Bob, I.
Zelia, I.
Heather, I, Sandra, I.
Perfect.
Thank you, Richard, we're happy to have you join.
Yeah.
Um, I will make a motion that we appoint Cory Nicholson to the old church on the hill committee for a one-year reappointment.
Go ahead.
I will second that motion.
Right, any discussion? All in favor, Bob, I.
Zelia, I, Heather, I, Sandra, I.
And Cory for the twofer, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that Cory Nicholson be appointed to the community events committee for a one-year appointment.
I will second that motion.
Hey. Hey, discussion on that?
I told him we could have put all this on one out.
No worries.
All in favor, Bob, I.
Zelia, I. Heather, I. Sandra, I.
Thank you, Cory.
I'd like to make a motion, see if I can get this one right, to appoint Terry Stenamont to the community events committee for a one-year term.
Right, any discussion on that? All in favor, Bob, I.
Zelia, I, Heather, I, Sandra, I. We'll make a motion to appoint David Bond Grant to the community events committee for two years.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, Bob, I.
Zelia, I, Heather, I, Sandra, I.
Wonderful.
I will make a motion that we appoint Heather Henry Henley. To the community events committee for a two-year appointment.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, Bob, I.
Zelia, I, Sandra, I.
Yeah.
Say I.
Yeah.
They'll let you know if they don't like it.
No, that's right.
I will make a motion that we appoint Gerald Wiley to the road committee for a three-year reappointment.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, Bob, I.
Zelia, I, Heather, I, Sandra, I.
Thank you for all those appointments. Yeah.
My gosh. On a meeting, that fantastic.
Wow.
All right, banking services proposal discussion.
So. Um, before the budget committee had met and started discussing investments, um. I had spoken to Andrew Scott and they had offered to do a proposal, um. They sent that to me and then I also reached out to Northeast Bank, who obviously we currently bank with and said, and it, it basically told them like. You might wanna review our accounts because as everybody knows, we've only been making three quarters of a percentage point on. Of interest on our money market accounts, um, which isn't a lot of money, as Peter well attested, um. So Northeast Bank got back to us, um. I've included both the proposals, Northeast Bank has already, um, changed our rates and committed to. Three years, a minimum of three years, uh, at tying it with the Fed. So currently our interest rates right now are five point one five percent. I just wanted to put all this information in front of the board, one, so that you know that. Our operating cash and our reserve funds and everything else are currently making much better interest than we have in the last twenty-four months, um. Significantly more, uh, you know, the, the operating cash money market account, what we call the sweep account. Average seven to eight hundred dollars a month in interest with about a million dollars or more in that account, um, now we're earning. A hundred and fifty-seven dollars a day. So you can see the significant increase in interest that the town is now earning because of these discussions. He'll, Peter will talk more about what the budget committee come up with because obviously I handed this to him after he put everything and done all the work and come up with the recommendations. And he read it and he goes. Obviously, at this time, with the way the economy is with these rates, it makes sense that, and if we're making this. Interest rate in our money market accounts, laddering CDs, which depending on the timeframe, we're actually less than what this is, um. Keep doing what we're doing, but I did suggest that they continue to put together the guidance in case those rates go down and the CD rates are higher. So that we have something to fall back onto if we get to that point again, so. Um, I'm not really asking for any action right now, it's, uh, currently it's. Everything still with Northeast Bank, um, we, I mean, big bank for Northeast for.
A long time.
A long time. Um, I do have some frustration, uh, like as we discussed. The check that was cashed, I, I don't know where it was intercepted because it had our vendor's address and name on it, it went in the mail. And somehow it gets deposited in the Bank of Texas by somebody who wasn't the vendor, um, as soon as I identified it. After I got past due notices from the vendor, I notified the bank, they confirmed that, yeah, the signature's not the same as the stamp that they usually use. And they started talking to the Fed and negotiating with the bank, but it was, I mean, it was a two to three month process to get the money back. I haven't checked the account today, but it should be coming back to us in the next, if it hasn't already in the next week or so, but, um. Andrew Scott again. Would have put the money back as soon as they found out, um. So, you know, there's benefits to vote, obviously currently, and Andrew Scott did this before, I think the last Fed hype or Fed increase, so. Maybe their interest rates have changed since then, but, um. Northeast interest rate did come in higher, but there are other things we need to look at, like, you know, why should we have to wait ninety days for money that? It wasn't our fault, the check was written to a vendor with a specific address and somebody else cashed it. For the amount of money that we have in the bank, I don't think it should have been an issue, um, but. Service wise, I mean, we use Andrew Scott Bank for a lot of our financing because they typically have the best rates and they're really easy to work with. I mean, for the last request proposal I asked for, they had, they were in my office in fifteen minutes with it all printed out and ready to go. So. Um. Right now, we're currently working on three audits, we're starting with the oldest and, you know. Do I personally think now would be a great time to move money while we're still doing all of that? There, there's a lot of work that needs to go into it from changing all of our direct deposits that we get from the state, from medical billing, everywhere else. Um, as well as the stacks of checks that I still have for this one, which obviously has a cost, taxpayer money, uh, but. Yeah. It's everything I got.
Yes, Sandra.
Good work, Cameron, it would seem to me that given just a little bit of investigation and asking some questions, you are now. The town is making a great deal more money. Um, so thank you for that and. As I see this, it would appear to me that you're monitoring this situation and that if. At some future time, you feel it could be beneficial to the town to open accounts at another bank.
I think if.
To bring that part, I feel comfortable with. The decisions that you've made and, and support them and thank you for the work that you did because, uh. Yeah, Northeast Bank made a lot of changes really quickly, when given the information that we may move somewhere else.
And, and I would, I mean, at the end of the day, i- if the board ever decides to look at o- other options, you know, inviting those banks in to come in and present that to you. Instead of me having to third wheel this in, because, you know, obviously they know the answers to the questions and I'm doing the best I can with everything I got, but, um. You know, obviously we wanna be fair and give them an opportunity and. I feel like they did right by us. Yeah, obviously we're still cheated by the fact that they moved out of town, but it was a business decision, but you know, it's. We're making a good interest rate on our money now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm kidding.
Thank you. All right, any other questions on that? Yes, Benny?
To clarify, Cameron, did you say we're locked into that for three years?
We're tied when, so when the Fed increases or decreases, obviously it'll, it'll affect our rate, but we're locked into that process. As opposed to just a fixed rate that they, they promised us, so if the Fed goes up. Our rates go up, if the Fed goes down, we go down, so.
If you're not tied.
So we're not locked in if a year from now.
An index rate, you could go to another.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Money out tomorrow, if that's what we decided to do. That's a good question.
That is a better discussion, yeah. To this process, so like I said, it's, it's, it, it'll automatically increase or decrease as, as it. But.
And I don't know.
We're not tied to them for three years.
I don't know what Andrew Scott told you, but as of a week ago, it was four and three quarter.
Andrew Scott offered four point nine five in the money market, um.
Four point nine.
And four point nine in the check, so that is one thing that I didn't mention, is they offered an interest rate in the checking and the money market, so. They're lower, but both of them are entered bearing. Um, uh, the way I currently do it is based off, I do APs, I keep. A certain amount in the checking to cover bills and the rest of it goes over to the sweep and I can transfer that back and forth. So it's a little bit more work on my part, but the money market does have a higher interest rate.
Right.
Is this something that you could bring up with Northeast Bank?
Yeah, it's a conversation I can have with them.
When you, when you go.
Like I said, I got, I got the proposals and I wanted to put them in front of you and let you know where we're at. Because I know, it's some people in this room and some people on Zoom have asked about the interest rate for the last three years.
Get Peter.
Uh, to clarify, then Northeast Bank didn't offer anything on your checking.
Correct, that's what I was saying. So the five, the five point one five is on all of our money market accounts, um, there's nothing on the checking, that's what I meant by, it's creating more work for me. It's not really, cause I'm already doing it, because I keep what we need to pay the bills.
You think there's a possibility they'll offer interest on the checking account?
That's what I'm gonna reject to them about.
I think it's a big deal because the, I, we, I did a lot of analysis together individually. And the same like, you know, you'd have to have a minimum of six, seven, eight hundred thousand in checking. Did you agree?
No, I, I typically, it. I typically run in between two and three is what I, is what I keep in the checking account, everything else goes into the money market.
Well, as a six one. Which five hundred thousand.
Cause I was making, I had a lot of payments. That's why I told you that those.
Move it over as you have payments when you can.
Yeah, so if I have a school payment for a hundred and forty-five thousand and then I've got a paving payment for four hundred thousand. Uh, there's gonna be a lot more in the checking account because the check's outstanding, I'm not gonna put it in the money market, because it's gonna be.
It's advantageous to get interest in checking.
Oh, I agree with you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, Benny?
And we have several savings accounts too, I'm just wondering.
Same industry, five point one five.
On all savings.
And we have the community day CD, which is set to mature in August and I'm pulling that out and. There, there's no point in renewing it at a lower rate. So I'm not pulling it out, I'm gonna let it come out and we're not gonna know.
Right, if you're into that kind of interest, then, yeah. Thanks, Seth. Any other questions? Yeah, that's great news, Cam, thank you.
Peter kinda put the. The fire in me, I mean, I had already started, but Peter's, Peter's helped a lot.
Thank you, Peter.
Budget committee recommendations.
I do think there's a report, and I'm not gonna spend much time on it, but just showing where the accounts are and it's. Having education and working camera and find out how the balance can go up and down, there's a huge variation. So back in February, we actually started this discussion budget and I knew that with me. Cameron was there and we. In the meeting suggested the idea of a CD ladder, which at that time would yield it, you know, close to five, so. Uh, though a lot more work. And uh. So, you know, same came around, went around and we, we had quite a delay before we had another meeting in that in. July, and that's when we got in earnest about. Did much longer report analyzing it, how you would do a CD ladder and when you got this offer from Military Bank. Uh, we took out the recommendation treatment. Uh, CD ladder. And I I would say. It's just a. Kind of a, it's the last part of his keeping options open for the future, you know. I think the very last point in that is that. There are a couple of things, we should be open to CD ladders at some point in time, which would be very different. Twenty more degrees. Uh, but that's not a big deal. I think we need to, I mean, the last point in the. Report is that we call the treasurer, town manager, budget committee, select board. Look at this at least once a year. As we, you know, lost the money. We lost a lot.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, we left a lot on the table not being up.
Yeah, it's not one person's fault, it's, you know, messy time. The catcher's play, but, you know, it's just a lesson for the future, I mean, you know.
Yes.
So, do you. Is this something that you feel the budget committee can really? Keep their finger on the pulse of this and. So. To make sure that that flag goes up when we need to. I think that's fabulous.
A lot of possible going out and lots of possible.
I agree, um, but either way, people feel about it that. When the time comes that you think we need to relook at. This, you'll.
I I think this will be very good for at least a year, but things have been, every prediction we've made in the last three years, it's. Better comes true, and it's really crazy time.
Right. Yeah, it's easy for us to lose sight of these things because we're so busy with other stuff, right? So getting those recommendations from the.
Yeah.
You know, uh, budget committee is very helpful like this.
We drafted this, the draft guidance for for approval of the select board. I don't think it's necessary anymore. Because it's a big event, this already been worked out.
Yeah.
Something finally worked out.
Thank you.
Absolutely want to take action on the bylaws, correct?
I think Penny has a question.
Oh, yes, Penny?
It's a saving account, that one's very interesting as well, I understood that same.
We haven't made a motion yet.
No, we need to make a motion on this.
So I would like to make a motion. That we accept the amendments to the budget committee bylaws.
I will second that motion.
All right, now further discussion. The bylaws. I see you addressed the remote attendance, which is nice.
Please correct the select board. And then they uh, for the first time add language without removing someone. In the board for non-alien, that's the only way to stop. And what they uh provide or they have a game. And go to the board chair and the board chair buy the reason and they won't be automatically.
Yeah, that seems pretty reasonable. It probably should be included in our fut- future. When we're looking at bylaws for all committees and.
Yeah, we're pretty good shit.
Yeah.
No, but it's perfectly the enemy of the good.
Right. All right. Any other discussion? Yeah, all right, we'll take a vote. Bye bye.
Zelia, I, well, there I, Sandra, I.
Thank you and thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Penny, thank you. Thanks for all your help here.
We're rerouting your rounds.
Don't worry, I'm hoovering.
Oh, shoot, tax acquired property.
Marked the wrong thing on my notes.
We're sorry, we're on the tax acquired property. Oh, see it, thank you.
So I put this in here, um. The, we had property automatically foreclosed from the twenty 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 twenty-one tax year, um. It was a extended redemption period because the thirty day notices weren't sent out for the automatic foreclosure. My law allows us to send those out and then reset that date, so it was February third of this year. There's four properties that the town acquired and. Tonight, I'm just looking for the select. My recommendation. Is to send one final letter to the four former property owners and give them. Thirty days to come in and pay their tax balance current, which means through twenty twenty-three. Um, to get the opportunity to have their property due back. If they do not answer that letter. Then I will come to the board and ask for. Your guidance on putting it out to bid for the four properties.
And these are certified letters that go out, so we know they receive.
Well, so there's things in the lien process, right? We send certified letters out. Well, sometimes people who owe property taxes know when they get that certified letter, what it is, and they just choose to unclaim it. So the post office will try to drop it off three or four times. It comes back, whatever. Um, one of the recommendations from municipal law class. Is to send it regular mail and just throw tracking up, run it. Once it's in the mailbox, it's been delivered or to hand deliver them, but. For one of these properties, I'm not letting any of my staff go and handle it, right? It's, it's, we'll send it out regular mail with tracking and when it gets there, we'll know. And then we'll give them thirty days to come in and pay their their tax bill and. We would quick, you guys would quick claim or quick claim it back. Um. But if they choose not to, then. I don't think it's in the town's best interest to sit on. These properties and we should. Get rid of them. And the law's changed recently, so it's, there's a lot, um. You know, we really can't, you can't make money off selling a tax acquired property, um. So at the very least, we're trying to get the tax revenue that we have not received that we should have. Um, some of the, there's one property on here, you know, there's. A significant amount, um, that's a. And you know, that hurts all of us as taxpayers, so, um. Yeah. If you would like me to send the letters out, I will send the letters out. And then once we know whether or not they're gonna. Pay your money, I'll come back to you and let you know.
I think.
Oh, yes, Sandra.
Anytime we can have that last show of good faith.
Yeah.
Um, because all of this happens. Under the watch of other people, so.
Yeah.
My thought is, is that this board.
Yep.
Um.
And amidst the pandemic.
Yeah.
Right, so. Yep.
I mean, realistically. And, you know, with with the pandemic, it's kind of good that it happened the way that it is, in my personal opinion, because these would have foreclosed, you know, a year prior. When it was still going on, so, I mean, they really were giving an extra year, but that also creates that they get another year behind, so. I mean, I don't think the town's and wants to just take people's property, but.
No.
No. This is what we're left with.
So, uh, were you looking for a. A vote on that or can we just say, yes, we should send that final letter and?
To the ball. If you want to vote, let me send in the letter just to make it official.
All right. I'll make a motion that, uh. We direct Cam to send out a final notice uh for those folks who. Uh. How should I word that?
Whose property was tax acquired?
Whose property was tax acquired? In February of this year.
Second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Peter?
I know the lawyer within me is coming out, uh. I think it might be good to say that in the letter that the town under no obligation whatsoever to do this, you know, it's a curse. Come back later and some lawyer pick it up, you know, it's sold and find out. Or narrow find it out. Betrayed it back and send the minutes.
Yeah.
Yep.
This is your.
Say we're under no obligation.
This is your courtesy letter to let you know that in thirty days.
And the courtesy extended period.
Yeah. But that they need to not just come current. For the twenty twenty-one act year, but that they need to. Become current to date.
Yeah, that's uh.
Um, because if they had. Come in. Prior to, am I correct, if they had come in prior to the foreclosure. All the, to avoid foreclosure, they just wouldn't need to come current for that year.
Correct.
But because they chose not to.
And the other thing too, and I'll say it publicly because I have a lot of questions about it when people come in. Twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, there was no lien work done by the town, so. I don't see people get a free pass because they still have to pay that. Um, we do have a nine oh six policy that says that when you come in to pay your taxes, it's applied to the oldest debt first. So people are coming in because they got liens for twenty-two, twenty, or sorry, twenty-one, twenty-two. So twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah.
So they got lien notices for the following year and they're wondering why there wasn't a lien for the prior year and then they get upset because they still owe taxes for twenty-one. You still owe the taxes that you owe. It's in their favor because now they're not sitting against two. You know, time clocks that are basically winding down to an automatic foreclosure, but that amount has to be paid before it'll even be applied to that, even that one could be released. Not a whole bunch of them, but there are a few that are like that and it's it's been, we've had to explain this over and over again, um. Just because we didn't do the lien work doesn't mean that you don't know the tax.
And that isn't. Something that. We didn't do, it was that the town didn't.
No, they just missed their window on filing the liens. I was on top of it last year with the tax collector and we made sure that we got them out. We're actually. We're in that window right now where tax things for last tax year are about to go out, you know, it could be. Two, three weeks, I think we have till, we've got like a month and a half or they have to be done, but in the next month or so. Those lien letters, the thirty day notices are going to start going out. So people need to be aware of that as well. And it's not something we like to be, you know, it has to be done.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, bye bye.
Zelia, I.
There I, Sandra, I.
Thank you. Now we're into the public comment period. Anybody have any comments? Yes, Viv?
I hope that. The board decides to hold with the left, if you have an old seat and there's ten months before.
No, I don't know what that was.
No, yeah, we just don't. Well, anyway, I thought that would be discussed tonight and it hasn't been. Are you going to do that before you return or?
I didn't have a specific plan. I wanted to get together with Cam and see when we could. Um, in the tenth draft of this agenda that I did, I actually, I I meant to put the under. His resignation or.
Yeah.
Resignation, I just totally spaced.
So.
We could add it.
I don't, I don't think anyone on the board, as opposed to having an extra like election, so we can fill up seat sooner. Under other business, I think we need to have this discussion.
Sure.
Um, and make the decision tonight, um, what's going to happen, whatever that is.
Okay.
Uh, start with a motion, I, do we want to do this or finish with the public comment period and then go into other. This topic as other business.
Yeah, let's finish public comment and we'll come back and do other business. Is that okay? Oh, so. There was Viv's comment, yes, Judy?
Um, I I have not heard anything about um, the Av, the possibility of the Avco grant. That I kept, Zach Gosselin was it, was working on to try to help redo the the town building. Where, I mean, that, we're coming into another winter. What what is happening there?
That was the community residency partnership, yes, and there. There's been no updates. We were on the list. I saw it on the Avco update and when I have an update, I'll share the update, but I don't. I don't have anything at this time, okay?
Judy, did you hear his answer?
Yes, I did. I I'm wondering, we're going into the winter, don't we need a new heating system and all?
The new heating system that the insurance company is paying for is going in in August, that we go the twenty-fourth.
Oh, is it going to be another oil system?
Propane.
Propane.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a heat pump, hot water.
Oh, it will be a heat pump. I'm glad to hear that, okay.
Hot water, um. But yeah, the propane is gonna, and and I had this discussion with Judy too, because after the last flood, sorry, after the last pipe burst, I don't want to call it flood. Um. She said, well, maybe this is the opportunity to look at, you know, some of the. Either heat pumps or geothermal or whatever, um, with with heat pumps, really, you need a secondary source. So because the insurance company is paying for the damage. Because we lost the two boilers, it makes sense to get these propane boilers in case in the future, if we do go with heat pumps. We have that secondary source. So that's my. Mindset on why we went, well, obviously the propane is more efficient anyways, um, but. That was my thought process on that. Sorry, I'm trying to.
So there. Thank you, Judy.
There is a primary election in November.
Yes.
Is there? Yeah, we. Let me make sure, is there any other public comment?
What's my comment?
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna go back to other business so we can discuss a future election for selected. Thank you.
So we, is this something we? Make a motion, so.
Forty days for nomination papers. Then you need to have your ballots thirty days prior, so really it's seventy days.
Yeah.
And are we gonna give Brittany time to verify signatures and then find? Yeah, it's, there's a little bit, we should give her, so we'll say eighty days.
Yeah, we have to march it down. Before we vote and see if we got time to.
Well.
November seventh, so. I trust the chat G P T.
So I guess I'd like to make the motion that. We hold a. Special, a special election as soon as practicable. To fill the vacant seat on the select board. No second one.
Oh, great.
Sorry.
Yes, any discussion?
We do the math.
Yeah, let's do the math. I already got it. You do.
Okay.
Nomination papers will be available on August nineteenth.
Perfect.
Wait, what day is that? Oh, August eighteen, August eighteen.
Okay. And that would give us enough time to follow all procedures. And.
Yep.
Include this in the November election, correct? Include this in the November election, correct?
Yes. I forgot about. I'm gonna have to have a conversation with Brett. I don't think she realized there was a primary in November.
It is.
I know, but she.
So if the papers are. Available on the, is eighteen through seventeen, on the eighteenth. And people have forty days to return them.
I gave a ten-day buffer there.
Okay, so what? What is the date that nomination papers need to be returned by? Because people don't have to pick them up on the eighteenth. But that's the earliest you can pick them up.
Forty days after.
Yeah.
We thought Azilia had her little wizard pad.
September twenty-seventh is when they'll be due, which let's hope that's a Wednesday. It's Friday. Also, they'll be due by close of business on.
I think it's Wednesday.
Okay, yeah, Wednesday.
Okay.
At least we're open that day. Due.
So, anyone who would like to run, just be aware that you need to have the papers back by Sep. September twenty-seven, yeah.
When you sweat, still twenty-five today, make sure.
I think it'll say, say it on the paper. It'll say it on them.
So. That means absentee ballots would be available by Wednesday, October eighth.
October what? October eighth is what?
That's a Sunday. When absentee, no, it's not. Looking right at it. No, I'm not. I'm looking at November. No, it's a Sunday. Thirty days prior to every election that the state holds is always a Sunday.
Right.
So absentee ballots will be available Sunday, but our office isn't open, so people can start requesting them on the eighth.
The night.
That's not thirty days in your bank.
It absolutely is the seventh, the eighth is thirty-one days, the eighth to the seventh is thirty days. And we had this conversation during the last election. It's always thirty days prior to the election, it's always a Sunday. The law says you have to have absentee ballots available thirty days prior. Well, they're available, we just won't start shipping them out until Tuesday. Ten.
Perfect.
Remember I was all wound up about this at the last election? I'm like, this makes zero sense. State law says, yeah, what town office is open on?
I might go to your Carolina.
Wait till I break the news of Brittany.
Yeah, when, when that's happening, I want you to go away for a day. Well, since it's.
It's gonna be another record election too, because that's a primary.
That's fine though, because all the state, all, all that stuff is gonna be on the machine. It'll just be the ballot clerk's off to hand count the. The selection, which is when we typically get the random write-ins in sixty different hands.
Whoever out there is voting for Mickey Mouse, you need to come and help us count.
I said, I.
We totally have the pages of names and it's this long and, you know, path homer.
Made up. So those people need to really come and see what it's like to sit here and count these votes.
So I imagine that the people, or I would like to believe that the people who are doing that don't realize. Have the added work that creates for the people counting. The ballots, so. Is that.
The Joker.
Is. Not to be discussed tonight, but perhaps we could look at ways to inform the public by all means, if that is. If Mickey Mouse is truly who you want to vote for, you have the right to do that.
Not a citizen, but they need to be a citizen of Buckfield.
Listen, it is illegal to tell someone how to vote, so let's just let them do whatever they're gonna do.
We could encourage people to take it seriously. To. Vote for a viable candidate, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we could.
Just let people know that when you. Vote for a fictitious.
Yeah.
Figure cartoon that it just creates a lot of. Yeah.
Makes sense.
Um, but they can certainly do that if they want to. I am not suggesting that.
Thanks. Are we good on that? The vote?
Yeah, so just to reiterate, nomination papers will be available on August eighteenth. They're due by September twenty-seventh. And absentee ballots will be available on Sunday, October eighth.
And that term would be through June.
They would have to run again, so. So if they get elected, it would be basically effective the day after the election. Or the night of, but obviously the day after. So then they'd have to. I'm assuming if we stay on track with what we did last year. We'll probably vote somewhere. Probably the eleventh, Tuesday, the eleventh of June, I'm not sure. Obviously, I don't know, it could be the eighteenth, could be the fourth, I don't know, it's whatever you decide, depending on where we are on track. So.
But it would be a short uh, term and then a reelection, like I did.
So it would be, you know, thirty days prior to that and then forty days before that, so eighty days prior to. To that date, if they plan on rerunning, they'd have to take out papers again and reset it with them.
Yeah, so just for informational purpose, I want to put that out there, because. Filling out the nomination paperwork twice in a year is. Good to see you.
Nope, I have my signature.
All right, so did we vote? Not yet, okay. Any more discussion on that?
Can we have the Zoom screening back?
Oh, I'm sorry. And make sure nobody else. All right. So. No one else have a question? Yeah, okay, so all in favor, bye bye.
Zelia, I, Teller, I, Sandra, I.
So what was the motion? To hold the special town meeting on November seventh? In conjunction with the general.
Yes.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Second.
I think it was me.
I believe so.
And it was for, okay.
We also need to decide on our next meeting, as I. This thing slipped by, see?
Yeah.
So August has an extra week.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I was getting at that week. Wait, didn't Azilia have some availability issues on the?
Uh, well, we were waiting on Sandra's work schedule.
Oh, for sure.
Our head. Um, I was the reason why we couldn't make this meeting tomorrow, but I'm free the fifteenth, the twenty-second, twenty-ninth. Okay.
Just for the record, I had everything posted on Friday.
I saw that.
I mean, I changed it. I hadn't posted on Friday, yeah.
So it would usually be the. Twenty-second?
Well, it was, it would usually be the fifteenth, because originally we were gonna have to on first, but now you're deciding if we want to change it. Or I mean, we could keep it the same, but it's only a week between meetings, we could do the twenty-second or the twenty-nine alternative.
If you move it to the twenty-second, you still have two weeks before your next meeting. Or if you have it next week, you have two weeks in between.
Does that one work?
Does the twenty-second work for you?
Twenty-second works for me.
Me too.
Me too.
I'm on vacation.
Me too.
Did I approve that?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we reschedule the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting to August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. I will second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, bye bye.
Zelia, I, Heather, I, Sandra, I.
Great, thank you, everyone. Make a motion, we adjourn.
Was that your motion or is it?
Yes. Thank you.
Uh, because when I was.
Oh, yeah.
At eight, ten.
Eight, ten P M, yeah. Thank you. How long do all of you have to vote on?
Yeah, we've been screwing that one up for a long time.
Well, somebody just said we didn't have to.
Say all the favors.
All right, all favor, bye bye.
I've never seen anybody say no.
Yeah, nobody ever says no.
So Bob, you made the motion as the executive.
Yes. Can have a great night, everybody.
Thank you.
Everyone.